We'd like to welcome everybody to the December 8th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman. At this time, the prayer will be given tonight by Alderman Bingle.
Thank you, Mayor. Our most gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, Lord, and the many blessings that we have received. We ask now that you are with all of those citizens who are suffering, Lord, who are sick, who in need of your love and care. And we ask that you put this forward and give us the in our citizens. For it is in his most precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
If you guys don't mind, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands for one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris? Alderwoman Harris?
Here, President.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Outlaw?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey? I think he's having some difficulty connecting. I T is trying to help him. Alderman Best?
President.
Alderman Odom?
Here.
Okay. Before we get going, I think the city manager has a couple of comments to make.
Yeah, Mayor, just real quickly, now that we're back on the electronic Zoom meetings, I just wanted to remind everyone, there was some legislation that was passed for electronic meetings such as these during emergency situations. It's 166A-19.24, remote meetings. So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that when you speak, some people may be on the call versus the video so that they know who it is, if you identify yourself. So let's take, for instance, I'll use Alderman Astor as our guinea pig on this one. So during roll call, obviously, we've already done that, but before joining any kind of deliberations, if you identify yourself and say Alderman Astor, I wish to say this, or if you want to say this is Alderman Astor, or this is Alderman Best, or Alderman Bingle, whoever, just make sure and identify yourself whenever you do that. Also, when you're voting, if you will, just make sure and say Alderman Odom, yes, or Alderman Astor, yes, however y'all want to do it. Just make sure that you state your name so that people who may be listening but not viewing will know who is speaking. They may not recognize your voice or whatever. So after the closed session, we will have a closed session tonight. We will come back into this meeting, which will still be active, and we'll do the same thing there so that we know that the meeting's closed. So if you will, just make sure and identify yourself is basically everything in a nutshell.
This is Mayor Outlaw. Mr. Stevens, is I T or somebody going to automatically mute everybody out here when they're not talking? How's that going to work?
I think everybody that's not a Board of Alderman member is muted at this time. We will unmute people, or they can unmute themselves whenever it comes time. Like, I know we have two requests of petitions to citizens, so they can probably unmute themselves. And then at that point, we'll put everybody back on mute. But if you would, if y'all know to turn your microphone back on before you speak, feel free to mute yourselves so that it kind of cuts back on the disturbing sounds that you may hear and the chatter in the background.
Mr. Mayor, this is Bobby Astor. On the request of petitions to citizens tonight, who and how are we going to take care of the timing?
Ms. Blanco is going to take care of that. City Clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. At this time, we do have two requests of citizens. First one is Kevin Bryant. Kevin, if you'd like to make some comments and identify your address for record, please.
Hello, this is Kevin Bryant, president of New Bern, North Carolina, Pembroke Community, and 1611 Pembroke Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry about that. I was having a little difficulties. But yeah, I really just wanted to see, like, I'm new sitting in and being involved in the community, and I want to do my part as a citizen. So I was at the hearing last night about the gem, and that brought up a lot of outlining, underlining issues that were, that's causing those problems around that area. And I just really wanted to sit in and see what's going on. I'll tell you the truth, I honestly thought that I would hear the meeting and the content of the meeting before speaking, because I wanted to ask more questions towards the end. Is that possible?
Well, this is the request of petitions of citizens, and you have four minutes to make any comments you'd like to make. From then on, we will be processing the Board of Alderman meeting.
Okay, well, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, yeah, well, in that case, like, my main thing really is just, like, I've noticed, when I'm in the meeting last night, it was pointed out multiple times by different people, including people from the city in the meeting on the, like, the maintenance of the Duffy Field, like, area, like, that's just really been plaguing the city. Like, there's been a lack of maintenance. And it's like, and I just really wanted to know, like, what can be done about that, and how do we get about fixing that? Like, this whole gap in the community in between local government and community. Like, I've been hearing a lot of people telling me that that's a major issue, and like, they don't know that these meetings are happening, or that they can even call in and talk with. And so, since that was pointed out to me last night in the meeting, and like I said in that meeting last night, I'm willing to get out here and put down the groundwork and link the gap, if that's what it takes, to make change. I'm here for change, and I wanted to see how I can come together with local government and help facilitate that. So really, like, my main issues are just, like, how do we, how do we get this, link this gap between these miscommunications? Like, I know that there's been a lot of talk, like, about the gem and fixing, like, fixing up different areas and rezoning meetings that have happened in the area, that I'm just finding out about these things now. But like, I'm not the only one, and I want to know how we can better that. So I just, this is my first time sitting in, so I just wanted to see how I could do.
Okay. Or do you have any more comments, Kevin?
No, sir.
Let me do this for you. This is a little unusual in the Zoom meeting. I will, I will have the Pub Works Director, who has been in charge of quite a few cleanup activities, et cetera, call you. And then if you are not satisfied with him updating you on what's going on in the Duffy Field area, I'll be more glad to take it from there and try to get you all the answers you need. How is that?
That is awesome. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for zooming in.
You're welcome.
See if we can get you followed up on everything.
All righty. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, our next request of petitions is Talina Massey. And if you would, Talina, give us your address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My address is 202 Trappers Trail, New Bern, North Carolina, 28560. All right, please. Okay, thank you, guys, for giving me a little bit of time this evening. I usually don't like to come up here and speak often unless there's something to really inform you about, something that's very impactful, or something that just necessarily needs to be said. I'm here tonight as a concerned citizen, a parent, an employee, a business owner. None of the titles matter, but at this point, just being concerned about the local area is my major reason for being here tonight. First, let me thank the New Bern Post, New Bern Now, Alderwoman Harris, and Alderman Best for being very proactive when it comes to the topic of COVID. I actually stood shoulder to shoulder with those women in the Five Points area for a PPE event with YUP, which was amazing, but sad to say, not often seen. As we know, Craven County currently has a record for active cases of COVID at 579, and we lead in death tolls in the eight-county region. Even some of those places where we don't have more, our population is lower. As we saw today, Governor Cooper will be enforcing a curfew on Friday due to the explosion of COVID, as well as, and I'm sure, again, you all know this because you're all involved in the local community, but it's a problem. It is a major problem that I personally don't see being alleviated until there's some sort of cohesive message amongst our leadership. If our children are looking up at us and looking up at our leaders and seeing mixed messaging, that's a problem. Every other day, I'm receiving an email from either Craven or Old College, or any one of our schools saying that there's been another case, which is concerning as a parent. It's concerning as an employee to work in a building amongst people and not know, just not know what's going on with the next person, with the next individual, having to quarantine. I participated in the COVID testing yesterday and saw how long that line was. And I can imagine the next two are going to be just as long, if not longer. It's a problem. And it's very concerning, again, that we're seeing our leadership have mixed messaging. When the hurricane came, we had a cohesive message, Craven Strong. We're doing a pandemic, and it doesn't seem like there is a plan to have resources collaborate, our health resources, our first responders, our local community and faith leaders coming together to create some sort of plan to help this area alleviate the economic and personal devastation of COVID. I haven't even seen much enforcement when it comes to events that are occurring for people to wear a mask. We've had amazing local leadership pass away due to this topic that we refuse to talk about when it comes to a plan. We leave it to everyone's own personal preferences. But it's not, it's not a personal preference issue. It's not a political issue. It's important that we somehow have some sort of cohesive message when it comes to COVID. It's not just about business operations. It's not just about our bottom line. I have a business. I mean, as an entrepreneur, we know how COVID has devastated our businesses.
Mayor, that's four minutes.
So that was it. I just, those were my comments. I just, I would really like to see a little bit more cohesion with our leadership, mask testing, and more of a concern for COVID than a concern to get back to something that's normal, because this is not normal. 2020 isn't normal.
Okay. Thank you so much, Talina.
Thank you, Talina. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, this time, we're going to go to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, this is--
This is-- Approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, the same. Okay, that motion passes. So let's go to number seven, appointment of the Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, this is Bobby Astor. I would like to make a motion to appoint Barbara Best, Ward 5 Alderman, for Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to appoint Alderman Barbara Best for Mayor Pro Tem for the ensuing year 2021. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Attorney Davis, are you good with that? Attorney Davis?
Unmute, Scott.
I'm with you. Sorry, Mayor. Yeah, I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Good. Just want to make sure you didn't want to roll call.
Yes, sir.
Second, item number eight, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is a resolution approving a second amendment to the lease agreement with the New Bern Craven County Area Farmers Market. As you recall, the Craven County Farmers Market, New Bern Craven County Farmers Market, had entered into a five-year lease agreement with the city that became effective of July 1 of 2017 for the property that's located at 421 South Front Street. The lease provides for monthly rental payments of $500 to the city from the Farmers Market. After receiving a request from the Farmers Market, the board approved an amendment to the lease in April of 2020 to waive the lease payments for the months of July through December due to COVID-related impacts and closures of the Farmers Market. They have requested that that be extended, and an additional amendment is before you to not further waive these payments for January through June of 2021. Happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this.
Okay. Board have questions?
Mayor, this is Alderman Bingle. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a second amendment to the lease agreement with the New Bern Craven County Area Farmers Market.
Second. Motion and second. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderwoman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Stevens has got item number eight.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask something real quick?
Yes.
Did we forget part of item number seven? Were we supposed to administer the oath?
Yes, we did. Madam Clerk, would you take care of that?
Yes. Alderman Best, do you have a Bible you can put your hand on? Place your left hand on and raise your right. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States so help you God?
I will.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of office as Mayor Pro Tem so help you God?
I will.
Do you solemnly and sincerely swear that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that you will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of your knowledge and ability, so help you God?
I will.
Okay. You'll need to come into the office at some point to actually sign the oath.
Right. Will too.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Barbara.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. We are a team. We work together. So thank you all.
Amen.
Well, go ahead, Barbara. Do you have any, anything else to say? Alderman Best?
I just said, we are a team. We work together well, and thank you all.
Mr. Stevens has got item number eight.
I think we just approved item number eight, Mayor. I don't know.
I'm sorry. Item number nine.
Item number nine is a resolution approving a pipeline agreement with North Carolina Railroad Company and Norfolk Southern Railway Company, and a license agreement with North Carolina Railroad Company for construction-related activities associated with the Duffy Field Wetlands Project. As y'all recall, the board approved moving forward with the Duffy Field Wetlands Project. It's part of some of the improvements that we're looking to do for stormwater improvements in the Duffy Field area. As part of Phase One, the discharge pipe under the railroad tracks needs to be enlarged from a four-inch pipe to a 12-inch pipe. To facilitate its work, a pipeline agreement is needed between the city and Norfolk Southern, as well as North Carolina Railroad. Also, in addition to that, a license agreement is needed between the city and North Carolina Railroad that will allow this to happen, this construction to happen. There's a memo that's been included in your packet from Mr. Montane, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. So board have any questions?
None, sir. Mayor, if there's no questions from the board, this is Alderman Best. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a pipeline agreement with North Carolina Railroad Company and Norfolk Southern Railroad Company, and a lease agreement with the North Carolina Railroad Company for construction-related activities associated with the Duffy Field Wetlands Project.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion?
Mayor, this is Alderman Bingle. Just Alderman Best, for the record, I'm sure Attorney Davis will pick this up. You said a lease agreement, and it's really a license agreement, and I want the record to show that because a lease is different than a license. Is that correct, Mr. Davis?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Yeah, it does. I'm looking at the agenda. It does say license. I'm sorry if I overlooked--
That's okay. I just want for the record to make sure if they were picking up your wording.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. And see no other discussion. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 10.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing city manager to execute contract documents for Hurricane Florence Category A Drainage Ditch Project within the North Glen Burnie Rennies Creek and downtown drainage basins. The city's been working with FEMA over the past two years on a project to remove sediment and debris from all of the drainage ditches throughout the city, about 66 miles worth. The work is going to address the North Glen Burnie Rennies Creek and downtown drainage basins that was put out to bid over the last several weeks. Trader Construction Company submitted the lowest bid of $309,880. It's requested that the city manager be authorized to execute this contract with Trader Construction for this portion of the project, along with any change orders that are recognized within the budgeted amount. Mr. Montane has included a memo in your packet, and we're happy to answer any questions that you may have regarding this matter.
Mayor, this is Alderman Harris. Attorney Scott, can we group 10 and 11 together?
Yes, ma'am. As long as the votes unanimous, you can do that.
Are you guys okay with grouping 10, 11 together?
I am.
I am.
Does anybody have any questions?
Just real quick, Mayor, the details on item number 11, if you're grouping those together, that one is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents for Category A Drainage Ditch Project, Jack Smith Creek Drainage Basin, in the amount of $382,650 for construction, Trader Construction as well. So those are two different basins, two different projects, but basically both with Trader Construction.
Okay. I do want to say on the side before the vote, to keep in mind for retreat or any other time we will make discussions on it, this is a rare opportunity for the city of New Bern to establish through drones, aerials, as built, whatever, a systematic means of future maintenance, because this is not going to last so long. Part of that is in some of the areas of, when I was Alderman, we were able to quickly remedy some problems when there was an open area where we could get a tractor in or any other type of piece equipped with a flail mower or whatever to correct some of the problems. So again, I just don't want to dwell on it too much tonight, other than the board does need to make some strategic plans for how in future it wants to make sure that in a quick five to 10 years, we're not right back like we are, that we can't actually physically get in to get to these problematic areas because of the growth. So just keep that in mind. So--
Mayor, this is Alderman Best. Thank you very much for making those comments. And I'm really glad to see this because this, this area has really suffered a lot for its waters concerned. So I'm really glad to see this. If there's no other questions on this, or I'd like to make a motion? Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract documents for the Hurricane Florence Category A Drainage Ditch Project within the North Glen Burnie, Rennies Creek, and downtown drainage basins, and the Jack Smith Creek Drainage Basin.
Second.
Okay, and that is your motions on both 10 and 11.
That is correct.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we have appointments. I'm going to start with Alderman Bingle.
None tonight, sir.
And Alderwoman Harris?
None tonight, Mayor.
Okay, Alderman Astor?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
None tonight, sir.
Okay, Alderman Best?
None.
And Alderman Odom?
None, sir. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, the attorneys report.
Nothing reported tonight, Mayor.
City managers report.
Yes, Mayor, I've got two quick things. I know many of y'all have probably seen the email, but recently, the city of New Bern completed all of its work necessary for acceptance into the NFIP CRS, basically Community Rating System. That is the National Flood Prevention Program. And so there's a lot of work that went over the last several months, went into this project from Jeffrey Jerry and his staff, especially the chief building inspector, wanted to make sure that he was recognized as well for the work and efforts that he has done. So Mr. Boswell's done a fantastic job with that, so he deserves a lot of kudos to bring every property within the system into compliance, basically so that we now qualify for this, which will be extended to all of the folks who have insurance, especially flood, or flood insurance within the city, help reduce their rates a little bit. So I would encourage everyone to reach out to their insurance agents who may have flood insurance, and see, now that the city is part of this program, what kind of impact it may have on their rate. So that's fantastic news that we now are in compliance with that. I want to make sure and share that with the board. As well as, you will recall, the last probably several weeks, maybe several weeks ago, we discussed the sidewalk projects in the Pembroke area along the Country Club Road area. Mr. Montane did get some pricing for that, and we, the lowest bid for the project was Concrete Technologies with a bid of $243,203. They, also, we had an add alternate in there that included extending Country Club, a long Country Club, an additional 1,040 feet, basically to Hartford Street. That came in for an additional cost of $36,456 for a total project cost of $279,659. If you recall, the budget that was included in our project was $250,000, but Matt was proposing to take $29,659 out of his Streets Division operating budget so that he can complete the entire portion along the Pembroke area there of those sidewalks on Country Club Road. Now, so that should do that. I wanted to make sure that, to notify the board of that, so we're going to move forward with that project. As a side note, that basically leaves about a half a mile, about 2,500 feet left to get us to the city limits from Hartford Avenue where it will end. To complete that, Matt's estimating that to be somewhere around $90,000. So whether that's a project for the future, or if the board wants to see where things end up this year and maybe allocate some funds, that's a choice the board can make at that point. But it'll put us within about 2,500 feet of completing the sidewalks along Country Club Road all the way to the city limit. So I wanted to give y'all a quick update on that as well. Matt's done a good job with his staff in getting that prepared and ready. So we're ready for a trigger on that and get that rolling here pretty soon.
Well, on your report, I can only speak for myself. I would be more interested in, as long as we stay within our policy and general fund, I'd be wanting to know from the finance director and yourself, if the general fund without-- without dipping into and requiring proper reserves, whether or not we could financially go ahead. I think it would encourage Trent Woods to come out and meet us with their sidewalk program, and it would just be a win-win for our citizens.
Mark, I have a question. I've got a couple of questions. One, we're just talking about one side of the street? Are you talking about both sides?
Yes, ma'am. It could only be one side.
So it'll be the side on the, I don't know what's north, south, east, west. So it's the side that would be the continuation of when you come off the bypass where the state had board sidewalks?
That is correct. So basically continuing where it ended off right there near Oscars Mortuary, it'll extend the rest of the way along that, I would call the western side of Country Club Road.
Okay. And where does the city limit actually end on that street? Is the law offices the end of our city limits or is it before that?
Matt, where'd the $2,500 get us to? Do you want to comment on that real quick?
Yeah, it is at the city limits. I believe it's just before the Townwoods neighborhood. If you look on the map and I don't.
Because I know across the street is then city of New Bern.
Correct. It did. Across the street, the city limits is different on Country Club Road on the east side versus the west side. That's correct.
That's why I was curious on how far down it went.
Yeah, it's just before the Townwoods neighborhood.
But the Townwoods is in the city limits?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And those professional buildings across the street from the Catholic school, is that in our city limits?
Mark, you could probably pull up a GIS map if you want to, but I can't, I'm not sure on that, to be honest with you.
Okay. And we can find that out, just be curious. And Mark, just to step back to your announcement about the NFIP CRS, can you send out a memo, at least to me or to the rest of the board, speaking to that so I can send it out to the people in downtown? I'm sure Alderman Best would like to send it out to some of her constituents because these are the people that are having to buy flood insurance and, you know, we're in a mess kind of when the flood did happen and we found out we weren't part of that system.
Sure. Mr. Jerry's on the line as well on this Zoom meeting. So what we'll do is we can get staff to pull together a memorandum that we can share with the board identifying, you know, our acceptance into the program and then some next steps recommended for homeowners maybe. Because a lot of it, I think, is going to be between the property owners and their insurance agents.
Correct.
But we will try to provide some guidance and some recommendations based on state guidance from us, as well as some of our, just sharing the information and get it through to our public so you can share it with your citizenry.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mark, this is Alderman Best. So is this in conjunction with the, I know a lot of my citizens did not get the insurance before the deadline. I think it was back in, it was during the summertime, I guess, when the new insurance rates was going to take effect for flood insurance. Is this going to, is this with us being in this NFIP stock, would this help these citizens now to get cheaper insurance or is this something totally different?
I'm not an insurance guru, so I'd hesitate to even answer the question on this. What my understanding is, is that the practices that the city takes home to ensure compliance with the CRS, Community Rating System requirements, will help further reduce insurance rates for citizens. Whether they signed up or not is not my call. I don't even know how that applies on this particular matter, whether they're even eligible at this point. I don't know. I don't have all those details. But what I can tell you is that the CRS system does help out with the rates in general.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Matt. Matt, did these, the prices of these sidewalks, did they exceed your estimates? Are you kind of surprised at how much these sidewalks project is going to cost?
Actually, to be honest with you, this is, as far as the removal and repair, remember, this project is 50% repair and 50% new sidewalks, including what was on Country Club Road. As far as the new sidewalks and removal and repair, it came in much online where we expected with the amount of sidewalks we're doing. We'll tell you that the Country Club Road sidewalk came in about, when you look at the handicap ramps that are included, the sidewalks that are included, traffic control, everything else, came in about $30 to $35 per linear foot. You're estimating, we're talking about the Pembroke neighborhood, $50 to $100 per foot if you'd have to relocate ditches and several other things. So to be honest with you, I think the numbers came in very good for what we wanted to do.
Yeah, Matt, let me interrupt you. This is sidewalks just from where the state's left off at the overpass or thereabout, just down to in the Pembroke community, not in the community itself, correct?
That is correct. It's just on the, on Country Cloud Road, but that's a small portion of the project. There are sidewalk repairs being done all across town, and there's new installed sidewalks being at several locations across town other than Country Club Road.
Okay. But the project for, the price of the project for Country Club Road didn't exceed your expectations? I mean, were they kind of in line where you thought they were going to be?
Yes, they're perfectly aligned right where we expect sidewalks to be.
Okay. Because I liked to fill out my chair when I heard you say the price. I didn't think it could be anywhere near that much.
And like I said, that's not just Country Club Road, that's the entire $250,000 project that we budgeted in the budget this year.
So this one contract is taking care of several projects throughout the city?
Oh, I think there's about 25 locations around the city that.
Okay, well, that makes me feel better then. I was thinking it was just that one sidewalk project.
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you, that makes me feel better.
Glad that was cleared up because I was thinking the very same thing, Alderman Astor.
And Barbara, I'm sorry, let me just remind you of this or recommend this to you. Anytime when we had a change in our rating with the fire department, we just encouraged everyone to contact their insurance company and let them know there had been a change. So that's what I'm going to do. I'm going to encourage all of my constituents to contact their insurance company and just ask if this rate change will affect their policy. Okay, sorry, Mr. Mayor, for interrupting. No, that's good. I had to borrow the city clerk's computer mine is rebooting for some reason. So, Mr. Stevens, did you have anything outside of your report?
No, sir, that's all I have tonight.
You want to talk about COVID testing?
I'm happy to. Yesterday was our first of the three free testing days, I guess, that we had coordinated with Green County Healthcare Incorporated. They set up and began testing around 11:00 AM yesterday at Lawson Creek Park. Actually, we had people already lining up in their cars about 8:30 in the morning. But we had 143 tests that were performed at Lawson Creek Park. Alderman Astor and I were fortunate enough to get on the news for the noon hour to try to increase the amount of people showing up, but we also wanted primarily to get the notice out that we have the testing available for two additional days, which will be next week, the 14th and the 16th, same times, 11:00 AM and 3:00 PM. And they will be at Stanley White Recreation Center, the Henderson Park area. That's the 16th, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. And then the 14th will actually be at West New Bern Recreation Center. So we invite people to come and please, you know, come get your test if you need it, if you're experiencing symptoms, if you're preparing for holiday travel and you want to try to help prevent the spread of the virus, whatever, at least you'll know at that point whether or not you have it. But we're encouraging folks to come out. But I think we had a pretty good showing for the first event.
Mark, let me just add too, the testing process that they're doing is very simple and it's very quick. We were testing about, I think I figured out about 45 people an hour, something like that. But the testing, I mean, the first stage you get to is just some simple paperwork. They ask you some questions, get your name, phone number, you know, and ask you a few questions about, you know, any symptoms that you may have had. But the second part, when they actually swab the nose, I have heard nightmares. I mean, I've heard that, you know, people say it felt like it was tickling your brain, you know, and they stick that thing so far up in your nose. This is not that type test. This was a simple, like Q-tip inside the nostril, just swirled it around a little bit. It was not uncomfortable at all. They didn't go real deep, you know, then they went in the other side, swirled it around a little bit, nothing uncomfortable about it whatsoever. And it was well worth it, just the satisfaction. And then they call you actually in, I think it's a three to the five-day process, but they'll call on my cell phone and give me the results. It's well worth it. With the holidays coming up, we should know, you know, who, if you may be, if you may have this virus or not. And I encourage everyone to go out to these next two testing sites and get tested. Mark, I apologize for taking up your time, though.
Well, excuse me, Alderman Astor and Mark, thanks for giving us, relating that information to us because I've had some people that they were thinking that they want to get the swab all the way up their nasal passage and they was reluctant to get the test for that information.
My daughter has been tested a couple of times and she said, Dad, she said, if you want to do this on television, you need to make sure they're able to cut it and edit it because it hurts so bad. She said they jam that thing so far up into your nasal cavity that it just, it feels like they're, she said, tickling your brain with it, you know? But it wasn't, they did not go, I mean, it was no more uncomfortable than blowing your nose. A very simple test, is not painful at all, nothing. Okay, anything else, Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir.
I do, Alderman Bingle, again, Mark, just I want to have a final update on the monies that we gave for small businesses or for nonprofits, excuse me, for nonprofits. Did we, we went ahead, it was a total of 26. Has all the money been dispersed now?
It was actually, it was 25, all said and done. I think we were counting the first row whenever I said 26. I was counting the first row on the Excel spreadsheet, which included the titles and names, you know, the little tops of the spreadsheet. So there was 25 total approved organizations, so it came out to be right at $50,000 since we gave them the extra thousand. And then, of course, whatever the consulting fee or the applicant fee was that BEFOR charged us to process everything. So it wound up being like $52,500 bucks or somewhere close to that, or I'm sorry, $52,500 bucks total, somewhere right around that number. And Mary's on the line here, so she could probably make a comment as to how the disbursement is going. I know that BEFOR provided us contact addresses and numbers for all those folks, so she might be able to add a little bit further.
Yes, this is Mary. They, we're currently got all but two of them in our system as a vendor. The checks are going to go out on Friday. The staff has been diligently contacted. Our system requires that they be, you know, entered into the system as a vendor, so there's a little bit of work getting that done. But they're all in except for two, and they were working on that this afternoon, and the checks will all be cut on before Friday. And we've contacted everybody and they all know, they're excited about the $2,000 as opposed to one. And I think it's going to go real smooth. The actual amount we're paying BEFOR, just since I've got the microphone, was $1,500, Mark, so it's $150, okay.
Right. Thanks, Mary.
Thank you.
Any other, Alderman, have any questions for the manager?
No, I just want to comment on that. I just want to say, first of all, thank you to Alderwoman Harris for her input on trying to get these COVID funding to our nonprofits. And thank you, secondly, to Alderman Bingle for all that legwork she did, all the typing and getting everything together, prepared as a document for us. And then also thank the board as well because we, like I said again, we are a team, we do great work, so let's keep on continuing to do that. Thank you, guys.
Okay, anything else on the city manager's report? We're going to get to new business here. And just to start off again, I'm sorry, I'm at the city clerk's computer, mine has decided to reboot for some reason. I just want to echo what Alderman Best said, we are a team, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate what each and every one of you are doing, and I look forward to the next year of big things for New Bern. I'll tell you, I think for what we've been through and are going through, I think we're doing pretty good financially as a city, service-wise to our constituents. And, you know, comments tonight like Talina Massey's concern, I hear her, I think the board hears her, and just like when Alderman Astor brought up his concerns, you know, the staff went and worked, Mary and Mark and others, and we found these three opportunities for our citizens to be screened. So again, I'm all for the citizen input and processing that, and then our staff obviously is there for us. So thanks to everybody for what they've done this year. We'd like to start the new business off with Alderman Odom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year because I don't think we'll see each other until 2021. Don't know about you, but I'll be happy to see 2020 go away. I remember my dad told me years ago, whenever I was looking forward to turning 16, son, don't wish your life away. He was right, but I can tell you, this has been a rough year for many of our citizens and us as well, and certainly looking forward to a new, fresh year and put a lot of this negativity behind us on many fronts, and I look forward to seeing each one of you. Thanks, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Best, Mayor Proton Best.
Is Jeff on the line, Jeffrey Jerry? Well, I had a question for his office, but I'll just get with his office tomorrow. I saw where that.
I'm here.
You're here? Okay, great. I just wanted to ask you, maybe you can clear it up a little bit for me. I saw that on the report that your office was going to be working with Rebuild North Carolina. Is this in reference to the funding regarding Hurricane Florence? Or is this with the litigation grant program as well? Or how are you going to, how are you going to do that? Can you explain it to me? How are you working together on that?
Well, we requested that they actually, remember from the last time when they made their presentation to us, I think you asked specifically what happens to those applications that don't get funded? So we reached out to our contacts at the, at the new Office of Resiliency and asked that same question to them, what happens to all these other applications that don't get funded, and requested that they keep those applications in, you know, and just transfer them over to the other program to save an incredible amount of time and effort, as you know, and how many times we've gone back to our citizens was asking questions over and over again during this whole process. So we've requested that they do that.
Okay.
And we haven't, we haven't heard a response yet back, but we can follow up with them again.
Did that give you any type of time period, you know, how is this going to, is this going to be expedited since you don't, these applicants who have already submitted in their application that's been there now for probably a year or two, did they stay, what timeframe are we still looking at? Is it going to be pushed back?
No, no, we haven't received any timeframe answers back from them, but we will definitely add that to the questions when we follow up, asking for a status on our request to change those, to move those applications to that different funding source.
Now, this is for buyout and elevation as well, correct?
Well, that was the original programs, yes. So, yes, exactly.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Only thing I have to say is that wish you all a very Merry Christmas and let's all be safe and wear our masks, wash our hands and keep our distance and hopefully that, you know, this virus will be under control soon and it's, I echo off of Alderman Odom, this has been a very trying year and there's been so many people that have lost loved ones. So, you know, let's just continue to do what we know is best for ourselves, our families, and that will include others as well. So I just look forward to having another good year together with all of you, and we have a lot of projects going on and we have a lot of things that we need to do for our citizens. And I haven't forgot, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, at our November last board meeting, that, you know, I'm concerned about the water issues over in Ward Five, and I know that we can work together and come up with a plan, the best plan. Five, and I know that we can work together and come up with a plan, the best plan for our citizens, and I know we'll do that. So Merry Christmas to all of you and thank you.
Thank you. Um, Alderman Kinsey?
Well, I'd like to wish everyone Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and a prosperous year to come. Uh, a question for the manager. Uh, Mark, um, since we have learned about some other situations due to COVID in the community, where are we at in making appointments? And, uh, where are we there? Can you share anything with us? Is there anything tonight before we close out the year that we need to share with you that what we can do to be a better server to the community as well as staff to keep everyone protected?
Um, well, um, I would, uh, and I, I don't know what you mean by appointments, but what I would say is, is...
It's like, it, it, like at the utility billing office, uh, coming into City Hall.
Oh, um, well, I, I will say, you know, the city has, um, uh, we're, we're trying to take the extra steps that we can to protect the citizenry, uh, both with our staff, uh, and, and the practices that we have. Right now, our facilities are still open. Um, but, um, you know, obviously if the, if the governor continues to roll back the opening, um, we'll have to reassess that, uh, with where we are on, uh, uh, facilities that are open to the public. Uh, we have, uh, initiated some, some, uh, internal protocols, uh, to protect, uh, our employees as well as citizenry. Um, uh, so that's more of kind of just an internal memorandum that we've shared with, uh, staff to, to help us better protect, uh, ourselves as well as the public. Um, and, uh, we'll continue to monitor the, the governor's guidance. Uh, as you know, he just issued today, uh, a revised, um, uh, guidance on basically shutting stay-at-home order, I guess, uh, basically a stay-at-home order that goes and is issued from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM at night unless you meet certain criteria. And I forwarded that all to y'all in an email, uh, so that you can share with your constituents. It has frequently asked questions in there so that people can click on that link, uh, that provides, uh, additional information about, uh, who can be open and for what reasons and who can be out for what reasons and things like that. So all of that stuff is in the email that can be shared with your citizenry. Uh, I'll make sure that, uh, Colleen, um, and staff get some of that posted up as well, uh, you know, with links on our social media outlets, uh, so that it continues that further guidance for them. Uh, there's a, there's, there's a lot of guidance for restaurants in there about their operations, restaurants, bars, nightclubs, uh, fitness centers, all kinds of stuff. So I would, I would advise all of them to reach out to the state if they've got any further questions, but the guidance is in the frequently asked questions if you read it. Um, and so a lot of that, uh, should provide some additional, uh, details. That order will stay in place until January the 8th unless something comes out sooner, uh, if the numbers continue to decline and, or, or look worse. Um, but that order is, uh, the, the, the stay-at-home order from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM is, uh, in place until, uh, January the 8th. So that'll be through the New Year's and Christmas season. So happy to answer any questions that you may have further.
I have another question, Mark.
Okay.
Like at each department, can we do testing when the guys come to work to make sure that the temperature testing?
There's lots of things, Mr. Kinsey, that we can do. I, I'm happy to talk those over with, uh, Human Resources Director, but I think we're doing quite a bit to help protect our staff and the public. Um, and, uh, um, you know, uh, without violating some, some, uh, uh, personal, um, personal beliefs or I guess HIPAA practices and all kinds of different things. So we'll look at that further.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Anything else, sir?
That's it, sir.
Okay. Alderman Astor?
Mark, I just wanted to make sure that you understand that if you feel that we need to change our policies to keep our employees safe, we're certainly wanting to do that. If we need to lock the door and do appointments only again, I know I'm all in favor of that. The last thing I'd want to do is open up, uh, uh, one of our buildings and, uh, have some of our employees become exposed. So just keep us posted if you need anything, you know, along those lines. I too would like, we also like, we wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year. I'm so glad that we can get this 2020 behind us and I hopefully we can start afresh in, uh, on January the 1st of 21. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing me the privilege and board members for allowing me the privilege to be Mayor Pro Tem this past year. And I know my friend Barbara is going to do a wonderful job. And Barbara, if I can help you with anything, let me know. Merry Christmas all.
Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in regards to the executive order, um, I don't know if we need to have some discussion. I think it would be great. Um, what are we going to do in regards to the events that we have scheduled? We have the street cafes, um, we have a lot of super spreader events that go on. Are we going to take some initiative to cancel those? Since we have a new executive order that's advising people to stay in the house from 10 to 5:00 PM, are we going to have, um, the New Bern Police Department enforce any of these, um, restaurants that are not following the executive order? Just want to get some more understanding. And then also for the employees, um, the fact that we set up the three different sites, are we allowing employees on our time to go get tested so they know their status? Because everyone should be tested. Um, and what about hazard pay? Are we paying our employees hazard pay, um, because they go to work every day and COVID is still real and people are catching COVID and, and dying of COVID? Then we need to have that conversation before we close out the year, um, since this is our last meeting. Um, have a real conversation on what we're doing as the board to, outside of saying, wear a mask, what, what initiatives are we taking to enforce these executive orders moving forward?
Okay. And you would like the manager or the, or the board to answer those questions? Who would you?
I would like anyone to answer the questions on having a discourse in, in regards to the executive order. And I would like to know about the events that are happening, Merry Merry Parade, New Year's Drop, are we canceling those? What message are we sending to our citizens if that, if we're setting up testing sites, but we're still allowing all of these events to happen where COVID could be spread for people that don't know whether they have COVID or not?
Well, I think most of the events that are going on at, at the time they were initiated were under the, we're in compliance with the governor's orders at that time. The newest one, which is effective, what, is it Friday from, uh, 10 till 5:00 AM?
Yes.
I expect the city and the citizens to be in full compliance with it, whether or not. Uh, I'm not sure that that newest order in any way precludes the Merry Merry Christmas or any other city activities due to the, the time from 10:00 PM till 5:00 AM.
Then New Year's Ball Drop, that, that's past 10:00 PM, 12 o'clock. When we drop the bear, that...
Right, that will probably, I agree, Alderman Harris, that would have to be canceled based on the governor's, uh, uh, you know, order today, but that would be the only event we have that would be impacted.
Uh, um, Foster and I had a brief discussion that, uh, you know, obviously we work, uh, pleasure with the board and wish to do whatever the board's choo- choosing is if they wish to close, uh, or to, uh, to do away with the event. Um, one of the things that we thought of is, is, I mean, this was going to be streamed online anyways. We weren't going to have any kind of associated events with it. There's no concert, there's no children's jump houses, there's none of that stuff. I think it was more of if people were downtown at that time of night, uh, could they see, uh, the bear drop and step outside of their respective restaurants or establishments and do that? Then they could, uh, but we weren't going to necessarily promote it as, as we were throwing this, you know, uh, closed street, uh, get together like we have over the past several years. Um, as far as with this new order, uh, the new order does have a stay-at-home order at, from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Obviously midnight, it would be within that timeframe. Uh, we could probably still do the bear drop and, and, and do it, uh, through video stream, uh, on our Facebook channels online. Technically, we would have the staff working, which would still be in compliance with the order. It's just we wouldn't have any events. So really, we, we were, uh, uh, we're just trying to think outside the box and ways to make things happen, try to create some normalcy. But if the board wishes to, uh, to cancel these events, we're happy to comply and do what the board's wishes are.
Um, in regards to that, are we going to, what's the enforcement process for these restaurants that are staying open, that are not doing, um, are we going to go back to outside in regards to the, the pull-up for delivery?
What I have seen as far as what the order says, uh, it says that restaurants can basically stay open to provide in, ends or onsite service until 10:00 PM. That means they need to make accommodations for having the space cleared out at 10:00 PM. People can't be sitting in their restaurants past 10:00 PM finishing their meals. It, they have, they need to accommodate. If they need to cut it off at 9:00 PM so they can clear the restaurant out at 10:00, then that's what they need to do. However, the, the, the order also allows these restaurants, uh, places who are serving food or beverage or whatever it may be, to continue operations past the 10:00 PM hour in compliance with whatever other state laws, uh, are there, uh, as long as it's not onsite consumption of food or beverage. So the way I read it...
For takeout, for them to do takeout.
That's correct. And they can take it out, they can do whatever, but it, it, as long as it is, if it's after 10:00 PM, it has to be takeout or, you know, carry out whatever.
Right. So are we going to be enforcing this because our COVID numbers are high? That's what I'm saying. What are we going to do in regards to enforcing the things that's going on? Because there is a lot of things in places that are not requiring people to wear a mask or suggesting to wear a mask and our numbers are going up. And we can only speak for the city of New Bern, I can't speak for Craven County Commissioners. I'm asking us, what initiatives are we taking to set up for putting stuff on Facebook and saying, wear a mask? What are we, what are we saying? The street cafes, how late do they stay open Friday, Saturday and Sunday? Is everything going to be closed up by 10 o'clock? I'm just want to make sure that even though this executive order is here and we're saying this, are we going to actively be enforcing this so that we can slow the spread of COVID? That's what I'm asking. To say, you know, let's think about what the board wants to do. I'm asking our board, who works great together, to make a decision and stand up with leadership to speak out and say, hey, let's figure this out so that we can slow the spread. Passing out tests and getting tests done is counterproductive if we're still continuing to support and, and have events where people are not wearing masks. That's what I'm saying.
Jamie, why don't we ask Tucson if he's had any guidance on how to, um, to enforce this new executive order?
Thank you.
Is Tucson on?
Yes, I am. Uh, we basically enforce it to the latter of the order, uh, but we are complaint driven. We don't go around, uh, trying to look. The, uh, the problem is there's so many exemptions that's to the order. So a lot of times when we do get a complaint and we go to investigate it, uh, that they meet the order in terms of the exemptions that are allowed. But we have been getting complaints, uh, and we have been responding to them and we will continue to do so.
So will you also, will you also, um, enforce the curfew? I mean, if you see crowds of people out past 10 o'clock, would you enforce that or is that going to be complaint driven as well?
That, it is not a curfew. Let's, let's make sure it's, it's not a curfew. It's just a stay-at-home order, very similar to what it was when everything was shut down, uh, during the daytime and he wanted everybody to stay home. So it's, we have no legal authority to say people can't be out. It's more of a, a voluntary thing.
Okay.
Um, Chief, so this is Alderman Bass. So if you have a complaint that someone is, I'm going to say, in the grocery store and doesn't have on a mask, how do you handle that?
We basically go to the grocery store. Uh, originally it was the owner of the business that is responsible to enforce it. We would speak to the owner and, or the manager or whoever's in charge of the business at that time and explain to them the requirement that people have to wear a mask and expect them to comply if they, uh, and normally we've been getting compliance. And if, uh, we, we verbally warned them first time and then we go back and we issue a written warning and then we haven't got to the third one yet. Get to the third one, we make a, a charge.
And, Chief, so to, to follow up on my last question for our employees, um, are we providing hazard pay for them to go to work every day?
No, we are not.
Um, is that anything that the board would like to discuss? We have first responders, police officers, firefighters, we have people that work in all departments that have to go to work. So why are we not providing hazard pay? Because COVID is real and people are dying and we don't have a vaccine right now.
Mark, we, Mark, I'm, this is, is Bobby Astor, I'm sorry. Um, Mark, would you do me a favor and maybe poll some of our, um, our benchmark cities and ask them how they're handling that? See if they're doing any type of hazard pay or extra pay for their employees? That'd probably be a good place for us to start and try to find out, you know, what other cities are doing.
I'll certainly do that.
Thank you. Jamie, is that a good start for you?
I think that's a great start. I appreciate that, Alderman Astor.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing by our employees, that's all.
Hey, I'm with you 100%.
Thank you.
Anything else, Alderman Harris?
Yes, I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday. Please stay safe, please wear your mask. And I will be getting a COVID test on December 16th in my ward. Um, and I'm going to encourage everybody to go and get tested to know your status is very important. Yes, we know it's the holidays. Yes, we know that this is very serious and things could be lonely and very sad, but just imagine if you're doing the right thing, you're saving yourself and someone else's life. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Harris? Alderman Bingle?
Yes, sir, thank you. I've got a couple of things. Um, uh, first, um, we have got to move forward on talking about, um, our election process and changes that we may or may not want to make. I'm not here to advocate for anything at this point, uh, but I would like at this point to, uh, see if we could make a motion to call for a work session on Tuesday, January the 5th at 4:00 in the afternoon to discuss legislative and charter issues. So any changes that we may need to make, that would have to go up to the General Assembly. And I think there's a few things we need to, to look at. It would be an opportunity for us to do a work session to discuss. Then we would have a meeting the following Tuesday where we could potentially vote to send, you know, legislation up to Raleigh, whatever the next steps need to be. So I would ask that we, uh, look at that date and schedule because the earlier the better. That would be the first Tuesday of the month. I'd also, you know, want to make sure that, uh, Alice is available with maps and everything else and to update us on the census as well.
So what time was that, um, Alderman Bingle?
4:00.
4:00, okay.
Um, Mayor, or, uh, do we need a, Mr. Attorney, we need a, a formal motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion that we call for a work session on Tuesday, January 5th at 4:00 PM at City Hall to discuss legislative and charter issues. At this moment, I'll call for a regular in-person meeting. Of course, I'd like the flexibility that if the COVID case is still higher, there are still issues that we make it a Zoom, we have the option to call a Zoom meeting if necessary.
Um, is there a reason why we're doing it at 4:00? We, can we do it a little earlier?
We can. I was trying to make it, you know, Jamie, I, again, I'm not sure about your sk- work schedule and I wanted to make sure...
Yeah, could we do it at 11:30? I mean...
I'm, I'm flexible that day, so I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Works for me.
I, I'm good, um, except for I have a, a doctor's appointment that I've just rescheduled for 15:00 that day.
So can we, you can do it at 11:30, that would work better for you, right?
Yeah, I would be able to attend, but I mean, I'm also, I'm also okay if, uh, if you want to do it in the afternoon and I just won't be able to make it.
No, we want you to be there, so...
We want you, we want a full board discussion if we can have 100% participation. Alderman Kinsey, are you available at that time?
I am.
Okay. Alderman Odom?
Um, yeah, I can make that work. It's just, uh, it's going to be tough coming off the holiday. That's really the second business day of the new year, but I'll, we'll figure out a way to make it work.
I just figured it gives us seven days, so if we have to make any changes to the agenda, we can do or add anything to the agenda. So my motion, my motion would be amended to say to meet January, Tuesday, January the 5th at 11:30 at City Hall.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Send an all favorite motions, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries.
I've got another thing I'd just like to say with, uh, us ending up, uh, 2020, I always like to... to set a goal for, you know, we've been working hard as a board for the last three years. We're, we're in the, the final, final year. And we've had the year of the elevator. We've had the year of everything else. I would like 2021 to be the year of partnerships. I think we have many different groups in our city and our, in, in many communities, and it's time that we start partnering with one another. I don't care who it is, if it's the Housing Authority, if it's Habitat, if it's NR CDC, if it's YUP, if it's whoever it is, that we start looking at ways to partner and bring all different organizations to the table on different issues to partner and stop trying to go it alone. And, and I want it to be the year of partnerships. So that's going to be my goal and my objective is to make 2021 the year of partnerships for us as a board, for us as a community, as a city, as a county, and really work on these partnerships. So that's what I would like to see. And then finally, I do want to also wish a Merry Christmas to all of my colleagues on this board, the staff, to our citizens. I want to just ask that you take the time to help those in need. There are so many people this year. I've been made aware of so many children that are having such a difficult time this year, that I'll be working with some people that will be providing, you know, gifts and relief to many of our schoolchildren who are just really having a difficult time. Their parents are having a difficult time. They cannot provide the Christmas that they normally provide. So you may not know something, because we're so in our houses and, and trying to stay away from everybody, we don't realize what's going on in the background. So I, I urge our citizens to reach out, call, call the school system, find out if there's a need, if, because they do identify. That's how I came to, to know this, is a teacher reached out to me that had children that were in desperate need. So we are making sure that they have the Christmas they need. Also pray with someone. Prayer is a powerful, powerful, powerful tool that we all have. And during this time of people being separated and this, this COVID, take the time to pray with people because I think it will really, really help them and lift them up in a very hopeful time of the year for all of us, as it should be, and as we go into a new year. So Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. I do wish for a much better 21 than, than 2020. But let's all work on those partnerships and come together as a city. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Stevens, before we go to a closed session, do you have any procedural comments to make?
Yes, sir. Just as far as a closed session, this, this meeting will stay active. Calls Colleen and Tony have this meeting active, so it will continuously run while we go into a closed session. When we complete that closed session, board, which is the link that I sent y'all for specifically the closed session, so all the board members got that link. If you'll go into that meeting right now, and then what we will do is we will exit that meeting and come back into this meeting so that we can make the motion to adjourn and close, or if there's any action that needs to be taken, which I don't anticipate. But if we need to take any action, we can do that in the open session. So when we get done with the closed session, we'll come back into this Zoom meeting. So we'll come back to the link that was sent to you for the, the main board meeting, and then we'll, we'll close it out.
Hey, Mark, do we actually hit the leave button or do we just minimize this?
Please hit the leave button. And everybody will, all the board members will leave. We'll go to the other Zoom extension meeting. So if you'll enter that one, and then when we get done with that, we'll come back to this meeting. Okay?
We'll still, we'll still the motion to go into closed session, too.
I make that motion, we go into closed session pursuant to...
143 311 A6.
Second.
Motion and second, is there a discussion? Send an all-informed motion, say aye.
Aye. Do we have a five-minute break?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
We're back in our open meeting. And is there anything further to come for this New Bern Board of Parliament?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, we are adjourned.
Merry Christmas, everyone. Happy Christmas, y'all.
Good night.